All right, I'd like to call the meeting of the Village at Campton Hills. It's January 21, 2025, 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Trustee Botner?
Here.
Trustee Burson?
Here.
Trustee McElvy?
Here.
Trustee Mallett is absent. Trustee Muncy?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
President Wonicki?
Present. Okay, please rise for the pledge. Nick, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trace, Mike said he'll be a little late, but he'll be here.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments, any?
None.
Oh, okay, no public comments for tonight? Did we miss anybody or no? Good, okay. All right, on to the consent agenda. I have a motion to move the consent agenda.
So moved, Muncy.
Moved by Muncy, second by McElvy. Okay, anything removed from the consent agenda? No items to be removed? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett is absent. Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to number five, staff reports. Public Works Committee, and that's Scott Marquardt from H.R. Green.
Good evening. As was started one or two meetings ago, with the Public Works Committee held a week and a half to two weeks before one of the board meetings, this gives an opportunity to provide a quick summary of discussion and action that took place at the committee meeting, which was held on January 8th. So you do have the minutes in the packet. I just want to go through a, highlight a couple of items in here. Item 5A, the KCOM STP project. That is, design on that is progressing. Just want to provide a heads up that here probably at a February meeting, there's going to be, there's two listed here, there's actually a third additional action item that is necessary, in that IDOT requires an IGA between the Highway District and the Village for that project to memorialize the cost sharing between the two agencies. We're in the process of preparing that, and we'll get it to both entities for their review. That's for that particular project.
And Scott, just for the public that may be here and watching, that is our bypass list that we did with?
That's correct.
The three roads, could you say those again?
The three road, actually includes four roads total. It's Campton Hills Road, Town Hall Road, Denker Road, and Brown Road. That's to memorialize that cost sharing to utilize the KCOM funding.
Right.
Okay. On that same project, there's a funding commitment agreement that the village is required to sign before that goes out to bid. The draft has been submitted to IDOT. It's, again, it's a standard form documenting what IDOT pays for the project, how it's administered, what you pay for, how you pay for it. That agreement does have to be approved before the end of February for the, there's a certain time period before the projects are let that they have to be approved and submitted to IDOT. So you'll see that agreement in February as well. And then there's also a construction engineering agreement necessary to oversee the project and document it, et cetera. That's another agreement that would come before this board, maybe February, maybe March, for that project. All different steps that are normal with a project like this. So.
And just to remind everybody, the timing when they let it, the odds of it being constructed next year or not?
The, whether it's an April or a June letting, it's typically from, and the lettings are done by IDOT and then formalized approval by the village. Construction typically starts about six weeks after letting, which even if it were the June letting, you've still got the August, September, October, and into November, which is plenty of time to do that project in 2025. So. Item 5E on the agenda, I just want to touch on McDonald Road speed limit study. We're going to talk about that in a later action item on the Village Board Agenda. So that's all say about that at this time. Item E, the 25-29 draft, five-year CIP, that has been presented to the Public Works Committee. Next step is we'd like to bring some of the information from that to upcoming Finance Committee meeting to start planning for funds that are necessary for additional projects after this year's, after the 25 roadway program. So when that, I understand a meeting from tomorrow has been canceled, so when the next meeting is scheduled, we'd like to have a discussion about that. The next item, F, Campton Hills Road, that's, I'm going to change the discussion of potentially a 2026 roadway project. There's a list that's part of the five-year CIP, been prepared in conjunction with the Highway District as far as priorities, and has been discussed here previously. If the village can go out to bid early in a year on a project for a following year 26 resurfacing, that really does mean that you want to look at budgeting the engineering to have the design engineering for that done in the summer of 2025. So that's another line item to be looking at in the upcoming fiscal year budget.
And possibly passing something at the board level to advance that engineering in February so we can be ready to make that deadline. Mike Mallett is going to be here later tonight, and then after the meeting, he wished the three of us discuss that.
Okay.
As an option to get on the, before the trustees in February.
Okay. Last item I want to mention here, oh, Route 47 corridor planning study. It's a long-term plan that multiple municipalities are being asked by the state and the county to participate in, the long-term vision for what happens to Route 47. So the committee suggested, they really think the village needs to be involved in that to have a seat at the table as to what happens ultimately with that project. The, and item seven, the Stormwater Reimbursement Fund, that will be discussed later this evening as well. So I would just all say about it at this time, pretty extensive list that the committee went through. So brief summary, if there's any additional questions.
Yeah, any questions or comments for Scott? No, hearing none, seeing none?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott. Okay, we'll move on to Chief James Lavand for the Police Department report.
Thank you. Everyone received the December monthly Police Department report. There's 228 calls for service, 16 accidents. There was a slight error in the citation portion of it because it didn't add in municipal ordinance citations. So there were 64 citations, two arrests. Law enforcement appreciation day was on January 9th. We celebrated it with a lunch here at the department for the officers. Also wanted to thank Trustee Williams, who did stop by for the lunch and also dropped off a bunch of treats from Reams. So everyone did enjoy that, so thank you. Squad one became victim to a deer on McDonald Road a couple of weeks ago. The deer ran into the driver's side of the squad car, and it was one of the worst ones I've seen in a long time. It pretty much wiped out the whole driver's side. There's about $6,000 in damage. We're waiting for a mirror that's on back order, but thankfully, it was only $500 deductible for us for all the repairs. But it's just a reminder that there's a lot of deer out there, and even the police fall victim to them, so. Next board meeting, I will have the 2024 Police Department yearly annual report ready, so I will get that to everyone. Stavi, Officer Stravula, she recently took over as the Crime Prevention Officer, which replaced me because I've been doing it the last 11 years and I have a lot of other stuff to do. So she's a great person, the community loves her, she's great with the schools. She's already put a couple things on the village website for crime prevention stuff. She'll still be really good at that, and she's going to start working with the Community Relations Committee for upcoming events in the village. Department's seen a significant increase in deception and identity theft recently. Sort of just a reminder to the residents, be cautious and be smart. If someone is offering you something that is too good to be true, including free money, it is too good to be true. And who I feel bad for many times is the elderly community because they tend to fall victim to it more often, and I can sit here and tell you examples of 60, 90, $120,000 that have been lost out of people's accounts. So we just ask everyone to be careful, especially with tax season coming, because it happens every single year. The IRS, utility agencies, government agencies, they do not call you, they do not ask for money, they don't tell you if you have a warrant, if you don't pay the money, that you're going to go to jail, but unfortunately, people fall victim to it all the time. If someone ever asks you to get them a prepaid card, that should be the biggest red flag ever because no one does that either. So we just ask all the residents to be cautious. If you have family members that are a little bit older, sort of educate them, look out for them too, so, because there's been a lot of incidents lately with it, and I feel bad for everyone. The Police Department will be hosting an emergency preparedness class here at the Village Hall Police Department, January 30th, 6:30 to 10:30. Officer Harvey put the class together with the assistance of Kane County Office of Emergency Management. There's a maximum 30 people to the class. It might be filled already, I'm not sure, but there is a flyer online for it. Block party application, this is something I asked the board maybe to consider coming up here soon. We don't have a current process in place for block party applications. Almost every municipality does. Not looking at this for revenue, don't want to add any fees for block parties, but the problem is, we probably average about 15 to 20 a year. Many residents have done this year after year, which is no problem, but they don't notify the police and fire departments. That causes a problem because if you go and block off roads, and we don't know what's going to happen, and there's an emergency, we sort of need a plan in place and a contact. So I'd ask the board to consider for possibly a future meeting or something, maybe coming up with a block party application. It's simple to do. Again, no fees associated with it, but I think it would be a good thing to have in place just so we sort of can track who is having block parties, dates and times, and have a point of contact so we can get ahold of someone. Christina has assisted me in putting together a citizen survey that I'm going to send out over the next month or two. It's a good opportunity to get feedback on the Police Department, be it good or bad. It helps also if there's ways to improve. If someone can be honest, like that would be great. We got our yearly Kane County Animal Control report. Last year, we only used Kane County Animal Control six times. Why it's a big deal, because we pay fees every time we call at Kane County Animal Control. Out of those six times, all of them except one, it was one dog, and five were for wildlife calls. So kudos to the department and the citizens because we take in lost dogs, I say on an average, three to five a week. We put it on social media, and we keep it here at the station, and usually a resident will come pick up their dog, which works out great. So if we go with other, the other option we have, sending it to Kane County Animal Control, the village is going to get billed for that. So it works out good, and we're usually able to get the dogs back to everyone. And I think that is it, unless there's any questions.
Yep, any questions or comments? No? Hearing none, seeing none? We'll just move on. Finance Committee, the cold and flu is making its rounds, and our treasurer is home, and he's very, very sick with the flu. So we'll just, he'll be at the next meeting to give a Finance Committee report. Moving on to action items, motion to approve ordinance 25-03, reducing the posted speed limit on McDonald Road to 40 miles per hour.
And if we could just clarify, that's on the portion of the McDonald Road that is in the village limit. There's another, if Scott, you could probably highlight that.
That's correct. The study analyzed both the portion on McDonald Road from Burlington Road to 47, and also from 47 East to the village limits east of Woodbridge.
Scott, I need a motion then to, yeah, before Scott gets into it too deeply, a motion to approve Action Item A or?
So moved, Muncy.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Who's seconded? Okay, second by Burson. Roll call?
They discussed.
Okay, go. Sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Oh, no, I apologize for starting too soon.
It's all right.
So that was, that was the limits of the roadway that were asked to be evaluated, both our village jurisdiction portions. The summary of the study, and the entire study is in here, including traffic counts, different intervals and such. The summary of the study is, both sections of roadway can be recommended to be reduced to 40 miles an hour from the current 45. So that's, there's two different methods that are used to analyze based on the, the study that's listed in here, and one supported change for one of them, the other method supported change for both of them. Either one can be used. So there is support here to reduce that speed limit to 40 miles an hour in both sections.
Okay, any comments or questions? Janet, go ahead.
I thank you. I appreciate the summary and the detailed information you provided. I looked at it. I question whether a reduction to 40 miles an hour is enough of a reduction to even be perceptible to the drivers that are, that are, that are driving along the, this stretch. And I think the other thing that we, maybe more importantly, that we realize is that they seem to be driving somewhere between 38 and 45 anyway, right? And so, you know, how much would we expect that it would go down? And if the, if the objective is to reduce accidents at, at 47, then I guess I wonder whether the rumble strips are doing their job firstly. Secondly, whether it would be worth the money for the signage to drop down to, from 45 to 40. And thirdly, if we really were intent on reducing the speed of the traffic in that area, whether the stop sign on McDonald at Kendall, which I think is warranted by the angle of Kendall to McDonald, would be more effective than reducing the speed limit.
If I could, I'd like to answer the, I believe the third question first, the stop sign at McDonald and Kendall. That was discussed when the speed study, traffic study was brought to the board, and our general professional opinion, both Trustee Mallett and myself, that that was not going to be warranted to install a stop sign on McDonald at Kendall. So that had been deleted from the study that was approved. The second, in regards to the speeds, the tables and, and speeds are documented each five mile an hour increment. It's kind of a bell curve. Always have a few slower vehicles, the mass, the traffic is going below, near, or above the speed limit, and then there are outliers of much higher speeds, as, as you see in there. A very large part of any speed change is signage when it's done, which is typically done in addition to new speed limit sign, you know, flags, et cetera, bring people's attention to it. But the most important part is enforcement. And this was discussed, and I'll defer to Chief Lavand in a moment, this was discussed when the study was brought forth, understanding that police, you know, enforcement was going to be necessary, so.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Uh, sure.
I understand that the stop sign might not be warranted based on traffic counts, but isn't it one of the ways that it could be warranted based on the angle of the roads?
Without a Deedsdale study, I can't say for sure, but it was, it was our opinion that it was not going to meet the requirements for a?
Is it 15 degrees or 10? I think it's 15, right?
I don't know the angle of that.
Well, no, I mean, the, the point at which the, a stop sign is warranted, I think it's 15.
I would not speculate or guess at, at the particular number. We can look it up, if, if that is the desire of the board to look at that again. Again, stop signs on through roadways are marginally effective in changes. They tend to be rolling stops at best, which creates other issues.
Thank you.
Hold on, Tom, Chief Lavand, did you have a comment? And then we'll get to you.
Yeah, just a quick comment on this. So we were actually discussing this prior to the meeting, and I almost hate myself for saying this because I know how police work, works, but, so, over the last three months, pretty much since we put in those rumble strips there, we have had zero car accidents, except for one last week, which was a minor one. Am I saying the rumble strips is the complete reasoning for that? No, I'm not saying that, and I hope I'm not jinxing myself right now. But was the rumble strips a part of that? Absolutely. There's no doubt in my mind that there was a part of that. I think, like, we discussed this before, and I listened to everyone here, and like the consensus was, we may not be able to do the big master plan, be it money, be it IDOT, be it all that, but to take all the steps you could as a board that was cost-effective, that would improve safety. Rumble strips, I think that was a complete no-brainer. That was a great choice. Even though this seems very little, five miles an hour, I think when you start combining these different things, rumble strips, a drop five miles an hour, enforcement by the Police Department, I do think that is going to help you in the bigger picture of it. I think you would continue to see accidents decrease there. Is it the be-all? It's not the be-all, obviously, but I have seen improvement, and since those rumble strips have gone in up there. So me personally, I understand the cost even with signage up there. I think it is something to consider that I think would be worthwhile, is even a five mile per hour reduction that could help up there.
Tom, go ahead.
That was my question. I was going to go to my speed expert, figure that's what I call you. You know, I mean, so you're feeling, your opinion is the five miles would make a difference? I mean, there's a cost of signs, and that's something I want to consider. I already know what signs cost, I know what the number would be, but you're thinking the five miles an hour would make a difference with the rumble strip?
Yeah, I think it's accumulative with, like, all this. I, yeah, I believe five miles would make a difference on it. I mean, again, is everyone going to adhere to it? No, they're not. I mean, you could look from the study, like, those outliers. I mean, okay, were they few and far in between? Sure they were. But you had examples of cars doing whatever it was, 80 miles an hour, like, up there? So like, it exists? Is it going to solve it? No, it's not going to solve it. But again, I think the big picture is keep doing these little steps that you can do. You're making an effort as a board to do something for the safety of the motorist. Police enforcement will enforce it up there. I think it would help. Like, it's not a negative. I understand the cost of it is a consideration, but I don't think it's a negative.
I mean, if the board needs, Ray could tell us the approximate price per sign, because we get them through the Highway Department. Sam Kalushin?
If you need to replace a 45 mile an hour sign with a 40 mile an hour sign, and we can use the existing post, you're looking at about, probably less than $100 per sign. If you need the post, or the post, the base, the sign itself, you could be looking at about $300, let's say, in that neighborhood. I mean, I can't tell you exactly, but in that neighborhood. So I would say we, we would try to utilize what's already there, and then if you, like Scott and I were discussing, coming westbound where that tree line starts, where the village begins, it may need one coming into that area. That would, that would be more expensive, but the rest would be fairly inexpensive.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ray. Nick, you?
Yeah, not necessarily specific to this project, but this type of project we're looking at with improving the safety on this intersection, the speed studies, these, if we had adequate foresight, this is the type of project that grant money would be, like, readily available for likely. I mean, if we could see down the road and identify these type of roadways and intersections, I mean, right now, of course, on this project, we're going to be cash customers, but going forward, would you say that this would be the type of project that would fall into likely some grant money?
When it comes to relatively nominal improvements, like studies, signage, changes and such, grants tend to not be the most effective. When it comes to major intersection improvements, they do. And that's actually something I'm going to touch on later on one of the agenda items on the Kane County Safety Action Plan. That helps grant opportunities.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, President Wonicki. Even though grant money's not applicable to this type of project, we, we spent money on it. We have a survey. The study shows us two different tools that, that justify the reduction in the speed limit. I think it's a responsible approach to say, yeah, that both tools say, reduce it to 40, let's reduce it to 40.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Scott.
Just to reinforce that, looking at some of the numbers in some of the sections, 30% of your traffic is going over 50 miles an hour. That was, you know, signage and enforcement has the potential to make a serious dent in this.
Okay, last comment or question?
Is there a reason to not just go to 35 instead of 40?
The engineering study did not support going below 40. It takes into account factors of roadway, access, prevailing speeds and such, and a speed lower than 40 was not supported.
Thank you.
All right, we ready to vote? Roll call?
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to Action Item B, motion to approve ordinance 25-05, an ordinance amending Chapter 1 of Title IV of the Village Code of Campton Hills, Kane County, Illinois, establishing the number of available liquor licenses.
So moved, Muncy.
Okay, moved by Ed Muncy, second by Tom. Kim, would you like to comment? There you are.
Hi, sorry. No, we just, go down. Okay. We just wanted to add the brunch license on Sunday because we just keep everything the same every day as far as when we open and that. There's just been a lot of, like, the Bears played at 8:00 AM one time this year, then there's people that want to watch these European soccer games. We've had people that want to have earlier parties on Sundays, like either funeral luncheons or baptisms, those kind of things. So we just wanted to apply for it to keep everything, you know, the same each day as far as the liquor license hours.
I think it's a great idea, but any other comments? Anybody?
Just a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
So is, is there going to be a Sunday brunch, or is?
Well, we want to do it not, we don't want to do it on a regular basis, and obviously we talked about not wanting to take breakfast from across the street or other places in town, but to do it for, like, special occasion stuff, you know? Like I said, like, the Bears being on at 8:00 AM, then we could do, like, a brunch, that kind of thing.
Okay, any comments or questions? Janet, go ahead.
The, the idea, though, was to be consistent with your?
Yes.
Your serving hours on the other.
Yes, right, yeah.
Thanks.
For customers that, you know, are like, what do you mean we can't come? I can't come that early on Sunday, you know? You have to wait, so.
Okay, anybody else? No? Okay, we ready to vote? Roll call?
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Good, motion passes. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, discussion items, 7, 7A, participating in the Kane County Safety Action Plan. Scott will be back up.
This is a, is an agenda item that was discussed at the committee meeting. It ties numerous things together, including the question from Trustee Botner about grants and funding for major improvements. The federal grant program called the Safe Streets and Roads for All. It funds two types of projects. The federal grant program called the Safe Streets and Roads for All. It funds two types of projects. One is planning projects, of which CMAP obtained the funding in order to do this. The other is implementation projects, was our actual construction projects. You cannot apply for the construction projects until there's a safety action plan in place. CMAP obtained the funding. They're working with every county around the area to implement this plan. Once this plan is implemented, municipalities can then utilize that and reference that in applying for funds for the Safe Streets and Roads for All. That's a real good reason to participate in, in this. In he, in the packet, there is a link to information on the CMAP website. That includes a map. It's an interactive map and a survey. There are, last time I checked, there were a couple hundred comments added on dangerous locations throughout the county. The more comments that are made, the better. That are gonna highlight a particular dangers, dangerous location. The more of those locations are included in that safety action plan, the better the chances of grant funding for it. So, I, I've seen locations, some are in Campton Hills, some are in other communities where there's ten and fifteen different people that have commented on a location. So if you think about somebody looking at the data, one comment on a location, eh, maybe, maybe not. Fifteen comments about a problem? That's gonna tend to rise a little bit higher to level. So I'm asking the board, the same thing that Public Works Committee was asked, is that go on the website, fill out the survey. It takes about five minutes. And then you can drop pins on the map, add notes as to your concern about a particular location. Now, keep in mind, these are now public comments. Keep them short, to the point about a concern. I think we just talked about, uh, one intersection. Many of you would probably go on and denote that intersection. Any other locations that you can think of throughout the area? Whether it's county roadway, village roadway to village roadway, village roadway to county roadway, county roadway to state highway. The more comments that are included in there, the better off. It'll help the action plan, the better. It'll help the village to better pursue grant funding for some of these projects. I would encourage the village to include this in, um, maybe a website or community counts. Any resident can fill this out. Uh, the comment period ends in February, so time is, uh, of the essence. And when you go on, on the website and look at a map and zoom into an area, you'll see other comments that other people have made. Maybe those are areas that you wanna comment on. Maybe it'll trigger your thoughts to, hey, wait, we have a similar concern somewhere else. The more data, the better. So, I would encourage everyone to, uh, follow that link and fill out your comments, um, and see what, see what comes out of all that.
Any discussion or questions for Scott? Comments?
Just as the committee, did they identify any specific locations in their long discussions? Did you guys have, John or Kim, did you guys have a rank one, two, and three?
No, we didn't. We looked at, we went through online, how to do it and.
I wouldn't comment about Campton Hills Road and LeFox. My suggestion there is that the very least cut back trees. As I'm saying four-way stop, definitely don't want to stop right there. Just cut back the trees.
That's true. Good, good point, Kim.
Once a month, Sam and Ray ask me for money to trim trees somewhere in the village. Some are, but some are.
They respond under the accident, the experts are assessing the situation that if the board knew that the communities and boards should be pinning those based on some of the limitations from police department also.
Sure.
I only know certain parts of the community, I only know certain, each of us all, um, know a part, that we want to get some of these more serious, um, interceptions or situations to address. It might be one I don't really know about, but it broke my attention. I would pin them and get them everybody, so we could get more data for some of these, you know, trouble spots.
Okay.
And the police would be a good resource.
Okay, thanks, John. Uh, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick comment. On the corner of LeFox and Campton Hills, uh, we've had, I think, two citizens in the past, not recently, but in the past, who've come before the board concerned about that intersection. And I know at the time, uh, Chief, you weren't the chief at the time, but they said, well, it's really not that bad of a corner, but I'm telling you, they were very concerned. They obviously wanted to see a four-way stop. I'm not suggesting that's the answer. I don't know the answer, but I know that there was concern. If you hear it from two different citizens who lived in two different neighborhoods that used that road, uh, that's something we should pay attention to.
Yeah, yeah, just a quick comment too, 'cause I talked to Sam Galucci. There's like a pothole as you're, you're, you're going, uh, south on LeFox and you turn onto Campton Hills. If you, if you miss that corner of the road, you, you hit like a really deep poth- pothole, so you might wanna look at that too. And then, uh, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, question two, you said the date of that was what, February?
I believe it's the end of February. I believe there's also a public meeting coming up. It's going to be in Elgin. Uh, I don't know if the date has been assigned yet, as a few days ago it had not been. But you can go in right now and start adding these. I, you just mentioned, uh, location of LeFox and Campton Hills. We've discussed McDonald and Forty-Seven. How many other ideas that have you heard from others that are in there? The more comments that are entered in, the better. It will not hurt if everybody in this room comment on the same intersection. In fact, it would help because it's showing a lot of people are noticing a concern about a particular location.
Is there a chance that, like, Kim, when's your next meeting? You said of Public Works, is it?
Public Works?
Yeah. Is it? There's no way we can get a list of, like, maybe, like, a list from you of intersection that you're like, hey, these are, these are the ones we think of all every day? And then we can get a copy so that the, this can actually be done? Okay. No, that's great, 'cause that would help us, you know, I think. And I think with the timeliness of these comments to be made, it's important that we get on this. Right? That's what you're trying to, trying to tell us, so I think it's important.
We can put this back on the agenda next meeting so we can hear from the chief again on the fifteen or twenty. And we'll tell you what we get from community counts. Come on.
Uh, go ahead, Janet.
I appreciate the comment about, um, trees and other vegetation that blocks some of the intersections. My understanding is that one of the challenges were, that, that any municipality would deal with is that there are statutory guidelines for, for, for how far vegetation can extend based on diagonal measurements and stuff from the center of the intersection and so forth, right? And, um, and, and these intersections are pretty big anyway. And I'm guessing without getting a tape measure out, that we're within those guidelines. Um, and so we'll be talking about trees and bushes and such that are on private property, that we would be possibly asking people to remove. And I'm not sure that we would have justification to do that without an, our own ordinance, would we?
Well, I, I would, uh, respond to that by saying, point out the problems that you perceive. It's not the duty of anybody commenting here to find, to come up with a solution. But if enough people say there's a visibility problem at an intersection, then it can get looked at. Okay? It's up to the projects that are ultimately selected to be added into the plan and designed at a future date to address a particular problem.
Great, thank you.
Is it within right of way? Is it outside? Don't know at this time.
Right.
But the more people say there's a visibility problem or a site distance or a whatever concern, the better.
Jim, go ahead.
Uh, I think Administrator Rooney said, if you could get that information for our citizens, if they got a concern about an intersection, put it in community accounts.
Yeah, that's good.
Tell them how to get to that site so they can fill it out. That would be huge.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Come up to the mic, just a quick question, Ray.
Quick question is, uh, are we talking about the, the, uh, I guess would be the southwest corner? As you come off of Campton Hills onto LeFox where the trees are blocking the vision? Is that what we're talking about? Or are we talking about both sides of LeFox?
I would look at both sides.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to the county in the morning. I'm gonna go check that out. I'm also gonna go up to McDonald and take care of the speed limit, make sure I know how many speed limit signs need to be replaced. Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. And the pothole, I, I, that may be ours, but I thought that was the county, so I'll, I'll double-check that too.
All right, thank you, Ray. Okay, we'll move on to discussion item, uh, B, Stormwater Reimbursement Fund, SRF recommendation. Scott, you're down for that too?
Yes, um, this is, uh, this is a new ordinance that the village enacted, uh, in twenty-twenty-four. There was one application, uh, that was submitted to the village. Uh, the process is, it's supposed to be looked at by a Public Works Committee for them to confirm if it meets the policy requirements or not. The information here, it does show that it does. Uh, the way the ordinance is written is they're to provide that recommendation to the village board. And then it's on the village board to decide if they're going to fund a, one or more projects based on available funding and to what extent. With the caveat that the ordinance says it's a maximum of ten thousand dollars or fifty percent of a project. So there is one project. This was the Long Shadow project that was brought forth last year. I would add that the committee recommended a couple additional recommendations, um, in that reimbursement should be, shouldn't be made until you get paid invoices and, um, lien waivers, protecting the village, fairly standard practice. And the second, uh, one is a reimbursement like this, current property owners will see, you know, have brought it forth, brought it forward. If it's reimbursed, what happens when those properties turn ha, turn over, turn, exchange hands? Sometime later, there's a similar concern. So, does the board wanna consider anything being recorded against the, uh, property? So that should, should a property be sold, that knowledge is that it's already been reimbursed and the maintenance responsibility is the particular property owner. An additional recommendation to deal with something that could happen in the future. So, but that's the committee's recommendation. Now it's discussion up to the board, um, if they wanna fund it and to what extent.
And just so the public knows, this is not, this is a kind of a developer private system. It's not a, it's not a village-owned storm pipe or township-owned storm pipe. It was put in many years ago and most folks that owned their properties, a couple of them, I think we found out from talking to Trustee Botner, they didn't even know the pipe ran under their backyards. So this is, and this is people that have lived there twenty-five, thirty years, didn't know they had a pipe under their backyard. So this is one of those rare issues that will occur time to time. And I think it's been something that's been well discussed here. And I think Trustee Botner knows people there better than most and had deep conversations. Could probably enlighten us further.
Go ahead, Nick, sure.
I think before, you know, we move too far on this particular property in this application, it's worth getting back in touch with these folks and seeing what the actual resolution was, um, because I do believe that all of these estimates were disregarded and they took this project on themselves. Um, so, um, of course, there wouldn't be any reimburse, reimbursements until an actual invoice or receipts. The way we had set this up was an invoice. If you do the work yourself, materials, all these receipts need to come in. But I do believe this is gonna be a, just a mega fraction of what is actually here, if anything.
You're talking about Long Shadow?
I am. I'm talking about Long Shadow property in this particular project, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, President Wannicki. Um, I think at this point, the next step is, um, that we approve it because in some cases, residents will wanna know at least they have that approval before they have the expenditure. In this case, they've had the expenditure and it's great to hear that it's gonna be much less than those three quotes were. Then obviously, as, as the, uh, Public Works Committee recommended, the reimbursement shall be made following submission of paid invoices and release of, if there's any lien waivers. Sounds like they did some of the work or all the work themselves. So, so I would agree. I think we move this forward to, uh, to getting in, um, for us to be able to have an action item and approve it if, if we all agree.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anybody? Go ahead, Tom.
What's everybody's opinion about one, with the property thing? You know, property owner has it done? What do we do to keep it so that it's kinda done, done? Like, once somebody else buys a property, if they have a continuing problem, how would you do that? Is there a way of doing that that, do you just register it with that property? How's that work exactly?
I would defer to the village attorney on probably the proper way to do that.
You can record something on title that just indicates that the reimbursement was provided. Um, maybe copies of the lien waiver, copies of the lien waivers and, um, attached to a, uh, maybe just a, something on village letterhead that indicates that the reimbursement was provided and what amount, what date, something like that. And it's more for informational purposes. It has no legal effect. It's not, it doesn't, you know, provide any cloud on title to a former, uh, future owner. It's just for, in the case that the village doesn't have record in the future or loses the record in the future, you can identify just by searching on title that it actually is there.
Uh, Ed, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the recommendation by the Public Works Committee included that, 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 um, that recording, um, against the property titles, but also some statement, where it was written here, was that, uh, that the property owners are, and future owners are aware of the maintenance responsibility. That's something we wrote into this as well, was that the future maintenance of this, whatever they had done, is, that's, that's also their responsibility. Can that also be recorded?
Sure. I mean, it would be part of the, the document that's, that's recorded, just a statement that, you know, pursuant to the village's policy that maintenance, you know, is, continues to be on the property owners.
Okay, anything else? Okay, go ahead, Tom.
I would say that based on this, what we're, what, uh, Trustee Botner told us about it, and even with that, I've been ready to move forward with it and have it be on, would it be either be on the next agenda or?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, great. And include those things where we put it into the title or keep it so we have track of that we did it, these properties?
It's a good program.
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's great. I think it's actually, I mean, it's, what I like about it is we're not a village, uh, what it started in two thousand and seven. There's things that happened previous to two thousand and seven that really was nobody's fault. I mean, it was someone's fault. We don't know who that person was. And it's just a way of rectifying it for the residents.
Yeah, good point.
And Trustee Botner, I'll work with you to get their point of contact for the Long Shadow group, 'cause there've been a couple names I've worked with, but I wanna make sure it's still the lead.
Okay, all righty. We'll move on here. Additional items from president, trustees, or attorney? Anybody? Oh, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, and, uh, I had two things. Um, one, I, we've had some really exciting talk about grants and different departments kinda taking the lead, the police department or technology committee. And, you know, previously this year, I attended the IML conference in Chicago and there was a great seminar on grants by IDOT and also the city of Rockford gave a great presentation on how their villa, how their city was structured and how they kind of funneled grants from a committee through administrative level through to the board. And that ordinance that they had is something that I scoured our, uh, our village codebook, our ordinance, looking for, you know, anything that resembled that, and, and there really isn't anything right now. I put something together and I didn't wanna take up too much of our time tonight going through it, just reading it. I wanted to hand these out and, um, I would just ask that, uh, one other trustee, uh, would second a motion to have this as a discussion item on the next agenda, potentially between now and the next meeting. Um, you know, I'm happy to communicate with everybody, but I think this is really important. to communicate with everybody, but I think this is really important for the village to have something, whether it's this or variation in our, yeah, of course, if you wouldn't mind just passing those down, thank you.
I would second a motion.
You'll second the motion? Thank you.
Well, are you moving? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, motion. We'll have this on the agenda next week as a discussion.
We will put it on the agenda. Don't worry.
Consent, okay. Got it, yeah.
Now, are there's extra? Can I have one, too? Yeah, looks like there's extras.
Yeah, there are. There's enough for everybody. And can I just go right into a second item?
Sure.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what the deadline was to have advisory questions on the ballot for this upcoming election. My, my question was, I do believe after this next election, we are likely going to be questioned again with user fees and taxes. And I would like to see some variation of this question, just as an advisory question on the ballot, you know, however we end up writing this, but something to get the feedback from the residents, how they feel about user fees. I mean, if we're saying a hundred percent of them would be used for roadwork, some variation of that question if we still have time to do that.
Let me refer to the clerk. Are we too late to put questions on the ballot? Something tells me we are.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we're a little late for that. But we could do something in community counts if you feel you want to get opinions, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate that we've been talking about this, and, you know, I'm unaware of the deadline, but we, I think we did drop the ball on this. You know, I really feel like to have that discussion, you know, over the next two years without putting something on a ballot, an advisory question. I mean, I think we really have to consider hearing the residents before we talk about these again. But that's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I just want to add to that, you know, we do not levy a property tax, and I think that's a beautiful gift from the village to our residents. And, but there's, there is inflation and costs are going up at all times. And I see John shaking his head yes in the back there. And so when we discuss the user fees, which are very minimal, it is something that perhaps we'll talk about again and bring back and see how the public feels about them. They would be very minimal, and they'd be a big help for the village, because we do have a lot of expenses. And, you know, we do have our own police department, which is, that's another gift that we give the village as well. So you want to say anything, Mark, or no?
I think that part of the budget process, the Finance Committee, in conjunction with the five-year CIP and other things from the Public Works Committee, this kind of joint wanting to make some recommendation this budget process in late March to the board. They, they've not decided, but they want to entertain what some of those costs would be and recommendations to the board as part of the budget process.
Okay.
They haven't decided on recommending it yet. They're willing to discuss it.
All right, anything else? No need for closed session. Motion to adjourn.
Aye, so move.
Okay, moved by McElvy, second by Williams. All in favor say aye.